Good evening. The time is 7:01 PM. The date is July 19, 2021. Beautiful summer evening here in Melrose, Massachusetts. First time I've been back in this chamber in quite some time, as many others. Great to see everybody back again. This is a meeting of the Appropriations Committee. I am Councilor McNott, the Chair of that committee. And in lieu of a roll call attendance, joining me this evening are Vice Chair Echols, Councilor McMaster, Councilor Migliorelli, Councilor Garapé, Councilor Gregoritis, Councilor Jamaladeen, Councilor Stewart, and President Sinella. And Councilor Thomas is walking in as we speak. This provides notice of the quorum for the record. And in accordance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on our local cable access channel, MMTV, as well as being livestreamed through MMTV3.org. The recording will be available for future viewing through the City of Melrose website and on MMTV3.org. For the folks at home, this is the portion of our meeting where any member of the public may come forward now physically to speak to any item on our agenda. This is the public comment period. So at this time, if there's no objection... I'm sorry, Mr. President?
There's also remote access.
And there is also remote access via WebEx. If you go to the city's website, you can get directions in. Participate remotely, which is a great segue into why we're here this evening. If there is no objection, I will move by unanimous consent to open the floor for a public comment. And seeing no objection, we're now open for public comment. Do we have any members of the public here to speak to the Appropriations Committee agenda this evening? Being joined by Mayor Broder for public comment, we also have Council Tremontosi.
Council Tremontosi. No doubt was waiting for me to have a seat.
Good evening. I was waiting for your arrival before I sat down.
Very much appreciated.
All sorts of cameos this evening.
I really just want to take a moment to thank the councilors and the whole council for the intention behind this. I think it is a great idea, and it is to build on some of the unfortunate but successful experiments we had with our technology. And while I'm not authorized by the school committee to speak on behalf of the body tonight, I do want folks to know, we're thinking about this, that the school committee, like the city council, is in fact going forward with the combination of kind of traditional meeting with the ability for remote participation, starting at our last full meeting last month. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we just get your address for the record?
562 Main Street, Melrose.
Thank you.
Could you verify that?
Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to the appropriations agenda? Do we have anyone on WebEx who would like to speak to the appropriations?
So if anyone, there's one person as an attendee. If you could just raise your digital hand, I can unmute you. There is nobody in WebEx. However, we do have a couple of letters that need to be right to the record.
Okay. And can we read those in now?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Dear Councilors Gregoritis and Migliorelli, as Chair of the Melrose Commission on Disability, I want to express my strong support for the resolution for the expansion on a permanent basis of remote participation during meetings of the city council, school committee, other appointed boards and commissions, and similar bodies. The opportunity to publicly participate in meetings remotely allows for greater and more diverse public participation and stronger government transparency and accountability. Remote participation provides both convenience, but also allows for participation by many individuals who, for a variety of reasons, cannot otherwise participate, including some individuals with disabilities. As efforts to allow remote participation move forward, it is important that such efforts are fully inclusive and maximize accessibility for those with disabilities. The Commission on Disability welcomes the opportunity to work with the city to ensure that is the case. Thank you for the opportunity to support this resolution. Chair Hoff, Commission on Disability.
Thank you.
One more letter.
To whom it may concern, my name is Rilda Kisel, and I'm the Chair of the Melrose Commission on Women. I am writing in support of Councilor Jen Gregoritis and Councilor Lila Migliorelli's resolution to promote remote access for all boards, commissions, and committees. As the Chair of the Women's Commission, I am keenly aware that women often bear responsibility for childcare in the home and how this may affect one's ability to engage in civic meetings. Beyond childcare, there are many other factors that may prevent someone from attending an in-person meeting. Throughout the pandemic, the Melrose Commission on Women has noted that our meetings and our events were more accessible and better attended due to the remote availability. I fully support the resolution to continue to have this access for those unable to attend city meetings in person. Thank you. Rilda Kisel.
Mr. Clark, do we have anyone else in queue? Anyone that may have...
I think there's been no...
Okay. And if there is no objection, I will move by unanimous consent to close public comment. Public comment is now closed. We'll move on to our only business this evening in the Appropriations Committee meeting, which is Resolution 2021-4, a resolution for expanding access to local government in the City of Melrose. This resolution is sponsored by Councilor Gregoritis and Councilor Migliorelli. And at this time, we'll turn to Councilor Migliorelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just go ahead and read the text of the resolution. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created conditions requiring municipalities to enable remote participation in and access to open meetings, and whereas this council recognizes that resident engagement in local government in Melrose has meaningfully increased due to remote participation allowances during the pandemic, and whereas many residents cannot attend in-person meetings due to family, school, and work obligations, and whereas residents with disabilities can face particular and additional challenges to accessing in-person meetings, and whereas barriers to civic engagement are substantially lower when residents can participate in open meetings via remote means, making government more effective and accessible to all people and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Melrose City Council, in an effort to provide increased transparency and engagement of residents and local government, will provide the public the opportunity for remote participation when public comment is on the agenda of the city council's meetings to the best of the city's ability. Methods of remote access the city may provide may include, but are not limited to, telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology. Such remote participation in public comment will be available to the public without subscription, toll, or similar charge. Be it further resolved that the Melrose City Council encourages other multi-member bodies in the city, such as the school committee and other appointed boards and commissions, to make similar arrangements for remote access for and participation of the public at their meetings and hearings to further ensure that the residents of Melrose have equal access and the ability to engage at all levels of government.
Thank you, Councilor Migliorelli. Councilor Gregoritis.
Thank you, Chair McNott. I just wanted to briefly say that we filed this resolution in the kind of weird period between the governor having declared the end of the state of the emergency and the state legislature not yet having extended our ability to have remote meetings. And it's where this body meets is really a matter of state law and the discretion of the mayor, but the ability to allow the public to both participate in terms of being able to watch our meetings and be able to speak in public comment is something that we have a fair amount of flexibility around. And I just want to thank everyone on this council because I think we made the transition to remote meetings pretty seamlessly. I know that wasn't the case in all municipalities. I think everyone here really embraced that, and I don't want to lose that. I also want to thank President Sinella, School Chair McAndrew, and City Clerk Foot for the past several months. They've worked really tirelessly to come up with the setup that we now have to ensure that any meeting held in this room can have remote participation by the public. And I encourage the boards and commissions that use this room to take advantage of that tech setup that we had put in place. And I just, I have one resident who, back in March of this year, she's a nurse, she works the night shift. She wanted to watch a planning board meeting because it was going to directly impact her neighborhood, and she was able to watch the first part of the meeting on her phone while she was on the T. What goes better with a T ride than a planning board meeting? And then she was able to watch the rest of it the next day when it appeared on the MMTV website. And I just think we have to think about how we continue to allow our residents to access local government. So I hope that you all join us in this resolution. We obviously don't have the purview over what other boards and commissions do, but I think we can set a really good example. And again, I want to thank our leadership for setting up the tech to do so.
Thank you, Councilor Gregoritis.
Just to add on, I think, as I think Ms. Kisel, the Chair of the Women's Commission, pointed out that the people who often get left behind in the ability to participate in remote participation are those who work nights, such as the example Council Gregoritis just shared with us, as well as parents who are trying to juggle, you know, work and after-school activities, disabled seniors. So offering this hybrid approach is something we definitely want to encourage the other boards and commissions to do because I think many people don't realize that once we have gone back in person, that that remote, even the remote viewing, isn't necessarily accessible by the public. So I think it's something that we want to just encourage the rest of our boards and commissions to take part in. And I feel like I've set a good example of that on the council. Thank you.
Councilor Migliorelli and Councilor Gregoritis for bringing this forward. And, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the job that our former Clerk of Committees and now City Clerk, Kristen Foot, has done in shepherding us through this crazy year of remote meetings. So thank you for that. You know, I'm just now realizing, I don't know if I feel more vulnerable now or when I was at home in my closet. So, but I think I was more comfortable at home. So thank you, Clerk Foot. Thank you again. That's all the business we have for this evening. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you have to act on it, no?
Right. Motion to place on file?
That's right. Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Motion to place on file made by Councilor Gregoritis, seconded by Council Tremontosi. We'll go with Council Migliorelli. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Chair McNott.
Yes.
Vice Chair Echols.
Yes.
Councilor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Councilor McMaster.
Yes.
Councilor Garapé.
Yes.
Councilor Gregoritis.
Yes.
Councilor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Councilor Stewart.
Yes.
Councilor Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
President Sinella.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
The resolution is placed on file. And now...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by President Sinella, seconded by Councilor Thomas. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Chair McNott.
Yes.
Vice Chair Echols.
Yes.
Councilor Tremontosi.
Yes.
Councilor McMaster.
Yes.
Councilor Garapé.
Yes.
Councilor Gregoritis.
Yes.
Councilor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Councilor Stewart.
Yes.
Councilor Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
President Sinella.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
We are adjourned. Table over to Councilor Jamaladeen. Chair Jamaladeen.
If you need water, if... Andrew. Water. I'm gonna bring water.
Repeat that, but I will say to you that Ms. Taggill is an accomplished professional with a deep experience in both municipal government and state government. And particularly on the customer service end in some respects, a little bit earlier in her career. The only thing that might trouble me about her a little bit is that she is a Boston University graduate. And those of you who know me know that I managed to spend a year at Boston University before I moved on to other places. But she is someone with a deep commitment to the community, and I am very excited to offer her candidacy for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Taggill, if you would like to say a few words. Flori, it's yours.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and councilors. My name is, again, Lindsay Taggill, and I'm honored to speak before you tonight on my nomination to the Melrose Historic District Commission. My husband and I moved to Melrose 10 years ago, and one of the reasons we love it here is vibrant and active downtown. We're drawn to its historic nature and to historic buildings. The combination of historic architecture with a lively and unique mix of stores makes Melrose a great destination. The town's walkability means that our downtown is always crowded with both Melrojians and friends from other towns. And as part of the Historic District Commission, I believe it's important to maintain that welcoming charm for the future while maintaining also the historic nature. And I look forward to being part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Tremontosi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Ms. Taggill. Although I'm not a voting member of the committee, I certainly will vote once it gets recommended to the full board for your, for full support of your selection here for this board, especially seeing another Ward One resident stepping up and volunteering their services to the city. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to ask question or speak from my fellow councilors? Counselor Echols?
I'd just like to thank you, Ms. Taggill, for stepping up. And if no one else was planning on speaking, I'll make a motion to recommend for passage by the full council.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to adjourn made by Counselor Echols, seconded by President Sinella. Please call her, though.
Sure. Chair Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Migliorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
President Sinella?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we have motion to adjourn made by President Sinella, seconded by Vice Chair Migliorelli. And if there's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we adjourn.
Good evening. Today is Monday, July 19th, 2021. The time is 7:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Public Works Committee. I am Counselor Thomas, the chair. Joining me are Vice Chair Garapay and voting members Counselors McMaster, Counselor Echols, Counselor Stewart, and President Sinella Ex officio. Now, this is the notice of the quorum. This provides a notice of quorum for the record. In accordance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on our local access channel, MMTV, as well as live stream through MMTV3.org. It will be available for future viewing through the City of Melrose's website meeting portal as well. This is the point in the meeting, open for public comment. If anyone has, any member of the, any person of the public may speak on items on this agenda tonight. Seeing no objections, I'd like to open public comment now. Is there anyone here for public comment or anyone online?
We have a letter we'd like to read into the record.
Yep.
We would like to ask these two questions. One, if this pole is to be moved, what would be the notification to the neighbors? Specifically, how much time or notice will we get? And how long will the service be interrupted as we all work from home? Question two, presently, the pole is positioned away from all other trees. The position that it's being asked to move to would move closer to a tree. We are concerned that the location may negatively impact our service through tree damage. Are there any consideration of that impact and plans to adjust the location or make changes regarding the tree? Chris Pierce.
And I do have someone online as well.
Do we have an address for?
Oops, sorry. Not on the email, but I believe it's a relative coming on right now we can ask. All right. Ms. Pierce, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Great. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Joanne Pierce, P.I.E.R.C.E., 24 Orient Ave., Melrose.
All set for your comment.
We just had a couple of questions. One was whether any consideration has been given or what mitigation might be done if the pole is going to be moved closer to the tree that's there on the outside of the street. And then the second question we had was how much notice will we have and how much, and for how long might our service be disrupted? Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else online or joining us in person for public comment?
I'm the homeowner of 21 Orient Avenue, and if you need your name, you can put it as you go on.
If you'd like, Ms., you'd like to make a statement and say your name and address, you're more than welcome to address the committee.
My name is Sharon Nguyen, 21 Orient Avenue, Melrose. I have lovely neighbors.
Welcome, Mrs. Nguyen.
And those are very valid questions. We all want to know how long it would make us without service. And I was pleased to find out. Not too bad. The question of whether the pole goes closer to the tree, I would just add, I'd be thrilled if it took down the tree. Fine by me. That's it.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Anyone else online or in person for public comment?
No.
Barring objection, I'd like to close public comment.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman, so that we may hear from the utility company.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Motion to suspend the rules by Counsel McMaster, seconded by President Sinella. Rules are now suspended. I'd like to welcome Moses. I apologize, sir.
Okokoro.
Okokoro.
Yeah.
From National Grid.
Yes.
Moses, welcome. Nice to have you in the City Council Chamber again.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, councilors. My name is Moses Okokoro. I'm here on behalf of National Grid. My address is 117 Metford Street in Malden. So basically, this pole, as the customer just mentioned, they want to extend, you know, her driveway. So we are obliged to move the pole to accommodate that driveway. Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, sir. So we're talking on Order 2021-158. This is a petition of National Grid to install approximately 880 feet of concrete-encased electric ducts from existing manhole A510 to an existing pad mount transformer at 585 Lebanon Street in accordance with Row Street Plan Number 27967397.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I took you back. Yeah, thank you. So this, this is actually for the purpose of providing electric service to Melrose Weak Feet Hospital. Yes, thank you. So there's actually an existing service, but we've been having issues with squirrels going up a tree over our pole line construction. That strips the electric service to this customer. So this is something that's needed urgently. Thank you.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes, thank you for being here. I have just a couple of questions regarding, regarding Row Street. How long do you think that this project is going to be, going to take? And my understanding is we're going to be digging a trench in order to do that.
Well, it may actually take. I can't be definite as to how long, maybe, I'm not sure, maybe two weeks, plus minus. I don't know how long it would take them, you know, to dig. Let's see, if they do, well, let me not be too straightforward, you know. I have to, you know, confirm and probably get back to you. Yes. We actually contract this out with civil, you know, different contracting firm. I don't know usually, typically, the turnaround time.
In looking at the list in the application, there's a lot of neighbors that could be impacted along Row Street. What's the process going to be for a neighborhood meeting in order, in order to inform them and keep them informed of when the project's going to start? What's, what to expect?
Well, same way we sent out letters, you know, for this petition here, and we can also inform them prior to the construction phase to let them know within this, you know, timeframe, we'll be doing this section up from the, you know, beginning of, from Green Street down to the hospital location. Yeah, so we'll send out letters to them.
Will we be, will the neighbors be able to have a meeting right on Row Street? So they have any concerns or questions they can be answered?
Sure.
If we could set that up, and I would, I would like to be involved in that.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And then what communication has there been with the hospital? And have we had the public safety, any of the public safety, police, and fire involved in this where that's going to close down Row Street for potentially eight hours a day, I would assume, for two weeks? And that's, that's the direct route for the emergency room?
Well, that's a good, yeah, that's a good question. We are still at the planning phase, but I'm sure when we get close to construction, we'll make adequate arrangements, you know, for that. We've actually been in touch with someone from the hospital, Mr. Jerry. We had a meeting with him, with, hi. Voney was present, and we all walked through the entire length of the conduit run, and he's already aware. So whatever requirements we have to make in order to make the job move forward, I'm sure we'll be glad to do it. Yes.
Okay. And then after the, after the project's complete, what's the plan for repaving the road? That's a direct access for public safety, for ambulances. You know, we tend to see over time, if we just do the trench and we, we just put hot top over it, they tend to sink and, and the roads deteriorate a lot quicker. So is there a?
I can answer that question. Voney Reese, City Engineer, it's nice to actually meet you all in person.
Welcome, Ms. Reese.
Sorry I'm late. I thought we were up at 7:45. I would have been here sooner if. So the road restoration, Elena and I have discussed this. Typically, we would ask, they're trenches all on one side of the road. So typically, we would ask them to pave from the gutter line to the center line of the road. And in some cases, since that road is not in great condition, what we do is we figure out what the value of that paving would be, and they just give us a donation, and we put it towards our road restoration program. So the city then would go back and do a full curb-to-curb mill and overlay through that section. That's most likely what we'll end up doing.
Yes. I appreciate you taking time today to speak with me, but I think that section of Row Street from Porter to Green is in, is in shape, as is Porter from, from Row up to Bellevue. So, yeah, anything we can do to, to make sure we're done, when, when the project's done, that it's paved and, and we're not going to be dealing with, the city's not going to be dealing with the expenses down the road. That, would appreciate that. And I'm sure the residents would, too. Thank you.
And just to address some of your other questions also, as, as we get closer to actually them starting the work, we will have more coordination with public safety. I do have a memo of conditions for them, and one of those conditions is that they coordinate with the hospital on access for ambulances and also general public safety and keeping traffic flow moving. And we will definitely have a neighborhood meeting with the residents. In fact, I just came from one that we did for a gas project earlier this evening. So we'll set that up as soon as we know when they're going to be starting.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for being here. One more question.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Barring objection, I'd like to close the public hearing for Order 2021-158. Public hearing is now closed. I'd like to make, barring objection, I'd like to make a motion to order, open Order 2021-159, a public hearing petition of National Grid to relocate 1JO Pole Number 1570 on Orient Avenue, beginning at approximately 276 feet north of the center line at the Orient Ave. and East Emerson Street intersection, to be moved plus or minus 14 feet to the north. And once again, we are under suspension of the rules. We'd like to welcome Moses Okokoro from National Grid, and once again, Ms. Reese from the Department of Public Works Engineering.
Okay, thank you. So my name once again is Moses Okokoro. My address is 117 Metford Street in Malden. I'm here on behalf of National Grid. So the customer, 21 Orient Ave., she wants to expand the driveway, so we are obliged to move the pole, approximately 14 foot knots, was to accommodate that new driveway. Thank you. Yeah.
Counselor Garapay.
Thank you. This is also my words, so I do have a couple of questions. One, I would, I would just, hopefully you could answer some of the Pierce's questions that they, they called in. How long, how long will this change of the service take to install the pole? And how long will there, will there be any interruption in service? And how long will it be?
Typically, the, the pole relocation is less than a day's worth of work. The pole movements, yes. But while they are moving the pole, no service will be interrupted. It's after, you know, then they can actually check and then, you know, adjust. But relocating the service shouldn't take up to an hour's worth of work. Yeah, so the customer will be out for less than one hour.
Less than one hour?
Yes.
Okay. And they'll, they'll move the, they'll install the pole?
Yep.
And do they do everything the same day, or do they come back a couple of weeks later?
So that's a good question. So this pole is a jointly owned pole. So we own 50%, with Verizon. So National Grid will do the install, pole installation, will move all our wired wires to the new pole, and then cut the pole at the top. Verizon and other third-party attachments will be expected to transfer. So Verizon actually takes out the pole at the end of the day, yeah. So we will just install the new pole, and then Verizon will be expected to take out the existing pole. So.
Okay. And is there, will the, what will the notification be to the neighbors? I think that was one of their other questions that they had called in.
Yeah, usually, with all the weather events, I'm sure they still give the neighbors, if any neighbor will be interrupted, you know, like a day's worth, you know, notice ahead of time to let them know to be interrupted, you know, probably moving something around, especially why it's going to impact anybody. Yes. But if there's not going to be any major impacts, they may do their work without, you know, notifying these neighbors. Yeah.
Okay. And, and there's enough room to put the pole in where that tree is? Or will there be some trimming of the trees?
There will definitely be, like, some tree trimming required, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Garapay. Counsel McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, both. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to make sure I understood the impetus for this. Did you say, sir, that it's to expand the length of the driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the owner of 21 Orient Ave., she wants to expand her driveway. So the pole would be just right in the middle, if you look at the sketch. So we have to move, you know, not to, in order not to obstruct the vehicle airflow in and out of her property.
Okay. And Ms. Reese, does that driveway work require any type of an easement that the city would have to be involved in?
No, I don't believe it does. I think it, I think it conforms with our curb-cut requirements that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is still on public way, so I don't think there, no need for easements, yeah, by this point. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Okokoro.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for any members of the committee? Seeing none, I would like to, barring objection, I would like to close Order 2021, the public hearing for Order 2021-159. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public. Did we already? What is, what is the will of the committee for Order 2021-158?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion to recommend from President Sinella, seconded by Counselor Echols. What is the will of the committee for Order 2021-159?
Undiscussed. Did Counselor Garapay?
I didn't, I didn't have a question.
I'll call the roll.
Madam Clerk.
Sure. Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
President Sinella?
Yes.
Six yes.
What is the will of the committee for Order 2021-159?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion to recommend for President Sinella, seconded by Counselor Garapay. Madam Clerk.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
President Sinella?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. President Sinella, seconded by Counselor Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public works adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep.
Good evening. Welcome to the July 19th City Council Meeting. Time is 7:50. I am Counselor Sinella, the council president, and this meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Echols?
Here.
Counselor Garapay?
Here.
Counselor Gregoritis?
Here.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Here.
Counselor McMaster?
Here.
Counselor McNaut?
Here.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Here.
Counselor Stewart?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Tremontosi?
Here.
President Sinella?
Here.
Eleven present.
And please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. First item this evening, if there's no objection, I would like to approve our June 21st minutes without reading into the record. And seeing there's no objection, those meetings are now approved. If there's no objection, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak on any matter that's before us this evening, please come forward. Anybody remotely?
There's just one individual from the previous meeting. Let me just ask if you would like to speak at full council? Please raise your digital hand.
Okay. And if there's no objection, I'd like to close public comments. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, and other city officials?
Order 2021-2, excuse me, dash 1, appointment of Sarah McClellan, 66 Wheeler Ave., to the Board of Assessors for a three-year term, said term to end on the last day of February 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to request immediate consideration.
Okay. We have immediate consideration on this order before us. And seeing no objection, this matter is now before us. We do have some, if we can get a suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Counselor Gregoritis, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our rules are now suspended. I believe we have Mayor Broder with us this evening.
Good evening again. I appreciate Counselor the immediate consideration so you can consider this incredibly qualified candidate. So Sarah McClellan may be known to many of you because she has been in the community for some time, but more importantly, in terms of your experience, she has been employed by the city for a number of years. First, in the Auditor's Office, and then in the Assessors' Office, and now is very well positioned to take over where Mr. Wilcock left off. As you know, this office is one that sometimes presents challenges as folks have concerns about their tax bills or whatever the case may be. That's one piece of it, but it's a very, very important customer service piece. The office has had high standards, and I know that Ms. McClellan is part of, that is part of her work ethic. In addition, if you take a minute to peruse her resume, as I know you will have, you will see that she is incredibly credentialed and competent, and importantly, has relationships within city government so that if folks need to collaborate on things like, you know, the Treasurer's Office needing information about property values, tax certifications, whatever the case may be, she's already done that kind of work and is very much well positioned to lead the department. And so I am very enthusiastic about coming before you today to offer her candidacy to you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor Broder, and thank you to the counselors for your consideration. As you know, for the past several years, I've worked in the Assessors' Office with Chris Wilcock. Chris has been a great mentor to me, and he certainly leaves behind big shoes to fill. I love working with the Melrose community, and I'm excited for the opportunity to bring my background and my experience in assessing to the role and the position on the Board of Assessors. May I welcome any questions that you have?
Any questions? No questions. Counselor Gregoritis?
Thank you, President Sinella. Thank you, Mayor Broder, and thank you, Ms. McClellan, for being here. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. McClellan and some of her work in the community, most notably the Melrose Ed Foundation. I know the dedication you bring to everything that you do. I'm thrilled to see you stepping up to fill what we all know are some very big shoes. I look forward to seeing what you do. I support this nomination. Motion to recommend for passage.
Second.
Motion to recommend for passage made by Counselor Gregoritis, seconded by Counselor Garapay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Order 2022-2, an appropriation from Capital Stabilization, account number 84052-590000, in the amount of $20,000 to Veterans Professional Services, account number 015432-529000, for restoration of the Veterans Honor Roll.
All right, that'll go to Appropriations Committee? That'll go to the Appropriations Committee?
Correct. Order 2022-3, authorization of accept two renewable AFDA grants in the amount of $2,500 for each of the Health Department.
That is on Appropriations.
Order 2022-4, authorization to accept a grant in the amount of $28,822.75 from the Mass DOT Shared Streets and Spaces Program, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Mass DOT. Funds to be deposited into fund number 4043.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move for immediate consideration of 2022-4.
Immediate consideration is being seeked for this order. Seeing no objection, this order is now before us. Yep. Somebody going to speak to the order? This is 2022?
Dash four.
Dash four. Are our rules under suspension still? Good evening, Ms. Gaffey.
Hi. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Denise Gaffey. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of a grant award that the city just received from the Department of Transportation, and it's a Shared Street and Spaces grant. This initiative is a collaboration between the Planning Office and the Public Works Department, and we applied for funding in order to provide some improvements to the central terrace alleyway in collaboration or in conjunction with a mural that has been funded by our previous wayfinding initiative, and that is planned for that alleyway space. So there's no additional matching funds required for this grant. We would really appreciate immediate consideration as we have the muralist ready to go, and we've also been waiting for this funding so we could do this as a comprehensive initiative, which will include paving the alley with new pavement, closing off the curb, which was a completion of an action that the Traffic Commission took a while back in order to close off that alley from vehicle travel, given some of the safety concerns there. It also adds a parking space on Main Street, which were, I think, is a great, is a win for the business community. So we'll be able to complete all of those elements of activating that space, including purchasing some furniture for seating, for outdoor dining, and for other types of informal activities. So we hope to get this project underway right away, and if we are successful in getting your consideration tonight, appreciate it.
Counselor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Gaffey, welcome. Hope you're having a good summer. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Has any indication been given by the muralist of what the mural might be?
Oh, yes. She's given us some sketches. We actually have a meeting planned with the budding properties. The mural is going to be on the pavement, and then it's going to extend up the side of the YMCA building and that side alleyway area. And so we are going to meet with the Y Director, as well as the Turner family, and the resident at the very end of that alleyway. We've been in touch with him as well, and go over some of the sketches. She's provided a couple of different sketch concepts.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Gregoritis?
Thank you, President Sinella. Thank you, Ms. Gaffey, for being here. I just, I'm thrilled about this project, and I know I happened to witness a driver attempt to go down that alley recently and actually do some damage to both their car and the planter. So I'm really happy from a safety perspective that we're pursuing a more permanent solution and one that brings art into our community and some shared outdoor seating. So I would make a motion for passage.
Second.
Got a motion for passage made by Counselor Gregoritis, seconded by, I think, Counselor McNaut. But Counselor Echols, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to call out, if I could have a sec, just that this was also part of the parking study, right? To make some improvements to that.
It was, and also our master plan.
Right.
Yes.
So I just wanted to call out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or on discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor Gregoritis?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNaut?
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Tramantosi?
Yes.
President Sinella?
Yes.
Eleven yes. Next up.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Order 2022-5, authorization to accept a grant in the amount of $104,663 from the Department of Energy Resources through the Green Communities Division, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the Department of Energy Resources. Funds to be deposited into fund number 4030.
Mr. President, at this time, I would move for immediate consideration of order 2022-5. I believe we have Ms. Grover here to speak.
Counselor McNaut seeking immediate consideration on 2022-5, seeing no objection. This is now before us, and Ms. Grover, good evening. The floor is all yours.
I sent you all a memo this week that pretty much laid out what this great grant award that we were just notified of a week or so ago. This is our sixth Green Community Grant. We're now in the competitive Green Community Grant phase. And as I noted in my memo, in the old days, we used to be able to apply for $250,000. We're now in the $750,000 club, so we're limited to $100,000. So we consulted with our facility staff and DPW, and we chose these two great projects to convert the original huge 1,000-gallon hot water tanks system at the high school for the days when it was built, when kids used to actually take showers after gym, and downsizing the capacity to, for electric heat pump, hot water heaters, and then converting all of the lighting at the Lincoln to LED. And we've already done the Roosevelt, and we also are planning on doing a number of other schools this year during the conversion before the incentives run out. But we decided to use, go after the Green Community funding to go out to do these two projects, and asking for immediate consideration tonight because we'd really like to get the domestic hot water project done before school opens. So I'm here for questions, if anybody has any.
Counselor McMaster?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Grover. My apologies, I didn't see the memo. I just wanted to know if there was a match required by the city on this.
Oh, I forgot to mention that. No match.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What is the will?
Motion to.
A man.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Counselor McNaut, seconded by Counselor Garapay, on discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Echols?
Yes.
Counselor Garapay?
Yes.
Counselor Gregoritis?
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen?
Yes.
Counselor McMaster?
Yes.
Counselor McNaut?
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Tramantosi?
Yes.
President Sinella?
Yes.
Eleven yes. Order 2022-6, appointment of Greg DeLaurier, 90 Grove Street, Apartment B, to the Council on Aging. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2024.
That'll go to Health, Education, and Welfare.
Order 2022-7, appointment David Quartz, 64 Marlin Road, to the Council on Aging. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2024.
That'll go to Health, Education, and Welfare.
Order 2022-8, appointment of Gwendolyn Orford, 28 Oda Street, to the Conservation Commission. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2024.
That'll go to the Committee on Public Service.
Order 2022-9, appointment of Thaeus DiMarco, 323 Grove Street, to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2023.
That'll go to Health, Education, and Welfare.
Order 2022-10, appointment of Lillian Yargood Kelly, 117 Boston Rock Road, to the Board of Health for a three-year term. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2024.
That'll go to Health, Education, and Welfare.
And Order 2021-160, requesting that the Honorable City Council review and take action relative to recommendations made by the Board of Registrazers of Voters for the consolidation of non-ADA compliant polling locations in the city of Melrose in accordance with information provided by Secretary of State William Galvin's office.
And just from clarity around this particular order, this is returning merely for purposes of sponsorship, and that'll go back to legal and ledge. Do we have any new business?
We do. Order 2022-11, an order on the status of various park commission projects.
That'll go to Appropriations.
Okay.
And we don't have any orders out of order. We have some orders from Committee. Counselor McMaster?
Yes, Mr. President, just a point of inquiry. Going back to Order 2022-1, appointment of Sarah McClellan, 66 Wheeler Ave., to the Board of Assessors for a three-year term, said term to end on the last day of February 2024. I was a little confused during the presentation, and I thought perhaps I was missing something. The agenda is for an appointment to the Board of Assessors, which makes sense in that Mr. Wilcock served on the Board of Assessors by virtue of his position. But the presentation and the materials before us were for the actual position of Chief Assessor. So I do think we need some clarity from the administration on what its intention was tonight, because what we actually voted on was an appointment to the Board of Assessors, which would be different than an appointment of a department head, which typically wouldn't be done on the first night anyways, in the first reading of it. So I do think we just, I think the intention of all of us, I think, I can speak for myself, was an appointment, a three-year term to the Board of Assessors. But the presentation and the materials before us, the resume and the cover letter, seem to expect that tonight's hearing was on an appointment of a department head. And that's not what we voted on, so I do think we just need some clarity. And if the intention is to send that back before us, I think that just needs to be made known to the administration that what we voted on tonight was an appointment to a three-year term on the Board of Assessors, not on a nomination from the mayor for a department head.
Here's your honorable mayor.
Perhaps, Jack? Yes, if you want to just add some clarity around.
Sure. As a technical point, and it is a fairly technical point, it is my understanding that technically the Board of Assessors actually hire the Chief Assessor. And concomitant with that, if you will, is we have often, like with Mr. Wil, in the case of Mr. Wilcox, in the case of some other candidates, that person has also served on the Board of Assessors.
Okay. Any other further questions?
I don't think at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we have some orders from Committee. Does anybody want to pull up the resolution from Appropriations? Counselor McNaut?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to pull up Resolution 2021-4, Resolution for Expanding Access to Local Government in the City of Melrose.
So it's a motion to pull that out of Committee? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Thomas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, so this matter is now before us. What is the will of the committee?
Motion to place on file.
Motion to place on file made by Counselor McNaut?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's placed on file. Next, anybody want to pull up any other orders from Committee? We have 2021-155. Counselor Jamaladeen? Or anybody?
Which one you're referring to?
The order in your committee this evening.
Yep, I would, I can pull it out, pull it from Committee, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to recommend.
First, we'll take your motion to pull it up out of Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Gregoritis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Now this order is before us. We'd like to.
Okay, since now it's before us, I would like to, this order comes from Health, Education, and Welfare Committee with a recommendation for passage.
Okay. A motion for recommendation of passage.
At this time, I would like to make a motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made for passage by Counselor Jamaladeen, seconded by Counselor Echols. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That appointment passes. And we had a couple things in Public Works.
Yes, we did.
Counselor Thomas?
I'd like to make a motion to pull Order 2021-158 out of Public Works Committee.
Motion to pull 2021-158 from the Public Works Committee, made by Counselor Thomas.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Garapay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That matter is now before us.
Motion to recommend Order 2021-158.
Motion to place on file, made by Counselor Thomas, seconded by Counselor McNaut. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to pull Order 2021-159 out of Public Works.
Motion to pull 21-159 out of Committee, made by Counselor Thomas, seconded by Counselor Echols. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. This matter is before us.
I'd like to make a motion to place on file Order 2021-159.
All right, we have a motion to place on file, made by Counselor Thomas, seconded by Counselor McNaut. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That is now placed on file. Anything to report under Rule 53 from any of our Committee liaisons? Seeing none. Well, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Counselor Echols. Yes.
When you want to.
I'm not sure if we do order new business, Order 2022-11?
We did, Counselor Garapay. That went to Appropriations. That's okay. That's quite all right. It's really hot in this room, so. So a motion was made to adjourn, I believe, by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor McNaut. I don't know if there's any discussion around that. I don't think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Meeting is now adjourned.